Welcome to the January 12, 2023 Parma City School District Board of Education Special Work Session. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Ms. Nucio.
Mrs. Bratz.
Present.
Mrs. Carpus. Mr. Kreis.
Present.
Mr. Ruda.
Present.
Mr. Vaughn.
Present.
Unless there is an objection, we’ll dispense with the reading of the special meeting notice. Dr. Smalek, can you please confirm that this meeting is currently being livestreamed?
Yes, it is, sir.
Can you please monitor the livestream throughout the public portion of this meeting? And if there is a problem, please speak out immediately so that the technical difficulty can be addressed.
Yes, we will.
As a reminder, work sessions are held at the Board of Education to provide its members an opportunity to discuss matters. Community members are welcome and encouraged to attend. However, they are not permitted to participate unless the Board specifically asks for input. So this brings us to discussion. Dr. Smalek.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have distributed sort of our agenda, and you have that in front of you entitled “Work Session.” All of you actually attended our building, our future meetings, the other night, so I don’t know that there’s a lot we need to rehash as you attended and didn’t participate, but observed. Also, for the public, they didn’t attend the same ones, two and two. There were two different meetings at which two Board members attended each, so we did not violate sunshine rules there. But, you know, obviously, the large question in front of our district right now is, do we want to move forward with another bond issue or not? And so that was the goal of the Building Our Future Meeting, was to get a little bit of community input from the actual constituents that had also helped to shape the 4-2-1 plan. So just, you know, for the public, because we haven’t gone through this, you know, via Facebook, we did talk about, you know, the outcomes from November. We talked about how we lost Seven Hills pretty soundly, 61% to 39%. Parma Heights, we squeaked out a victory in Parma Heights. In Parma itself, we lost as well, although only by about 700 votes, so that was a very close margin there. One of the interesting tidbits, as we looked further into election results, our undervotes were 1,229, so those were folks within our voting consistency that drew a ballot but never got to Issue Nine, didn’t vote on Issue Nine. Vote-by-mail and in-person voting was really a weakness for us. We lost by approximately 1,400 votes. And again, we only lost really by 1,800 votes total, so clearly, you know, a large gap came from the actual vote-by-mail or early in-person. Just as a review, too, we had a survey for folks that were willing to share their thoughts. We emailed the survey. We put the survey out via social media. And I think, again, the most important point to emphasize is that the no-need, in other words, you know, folks saying, “I voted no because I don’t see the need,” that’s not really picking up any ground in our community. It was by far the least cited reason, with only five people actually citing, you know, the need. So, you know, from that, you’d be able to really deduce that, you know, folks understand our buildings are old and that we, you know, have a need to upgrade our facilities. Can’t afford, which was a combination of inflation, you know, taxes are high enough, I just can’t afford it, anything within that type of range, we lumped in the conglomerate answer of can’t afford, that was 35 people. Don’t trust us was at 39 folks. And then bad plan, so, and again, that could have been a number of issues. A lot of folks, you know, continue to still suggest others, other plans that they thought were better, including the, you know, the two secondary campuses plan. So that was the plurality of answers. So that is looking backward, but, you know, really here this evening, we’re here to talk about, you know, moving forward. And so we do have, you know, the same, essentially the same parameters in place that were in place in November exist again for May. And so that’s the expedited local partnership program from the Ohio Facilities Construction Commission. The 37% is still essentially on the table, which is $71.9 million of the co-funded segment. We have worked this week, and I thank Mr. Nucio for his work on this. I also thank our municipal advisor, Michael Priscilla, as well as our attorney who helps us with this, Rick Maniloff from Squire. But the answer, the million-dollar answer here is, the mill amount would be very similar. If we go forward with a bond issue, it would be 3.98 mils. So that ticks us up just a bit to $11.61 a month. I believe that’s a dime increase. So essentially, the ask will be the same for the community. We are able to accommodate a little bit of a variation. The price has gone up to $250 million, and that was a GPD number that they provided based on some inflation that’s occurred since the fall. The interest rate actually stays at 5%. We had already accommodated for increasing interest rates, and so our municipal advisor at this point is advising that 5%. So 3.98 mils, the rest is funded through COPS, which will tighten certainly our belt for permanent improvement money that we have available to us. And, you know, that is, that’s not new. I mean, we are already looking at COPS. We’ve increased the COPS slightly, as, again, you know, that $13 million of an increase due to inflation had to be accommodated. If you remember, I’ve provided the Board with this information in an email, but also the other night, we discussed it. We do not really have the ability to go forward on a November ballot, because the November ballot, we would not have a new plan from the state yet, so we would not know our matching share, nor would we know the amount that it would cost to actually build the building. And that’s two very significant variables that would be difficult to overcome when we would have to explain that we’re projecting. We then, that’s, you know, the permanent improvement piece and bond issue. The other piece, and this is not new to the Board nor to our public that has, you know, tuned into any work sessions or meetings, we certainly are cognizant of the fact that we have some deficits in the near future. 2026 currently has projected a $6.6 million deficit. In 2027, that really increases significantly to $37 million. So, you know, our two options are, we can maintain that and pass at least an eight-mill emergency levy, and again, that’s at least. I want to reinforce that and echo that. We’re not quoting it at eight. We’re saying at least eight by November of ’24. Or, we can eliminate that deficit, and we believe we can eliminate it. We think we can work through our consolidation plans, which have become more clear as we, you know, come to the date of actually closing three schools. And we think that that can trim that ’26 deficit. But again, we would still need that emergency levy in the relatively near future, and in that case, it would be 2025. We also have substitute considerations in terms of looking at the emergency levies of 2024 and 2027. At this point, Mr. Nucio has projected a levy, a substitute levy of 6.4 mils. Now, we’re not here this evening really to say, are we substitute or are we not? You know, in terms of going forward, substitute or just straight with a renewal? We have included the provision of substitute at this point. If you wanted to, you know, put in just the renewal, that would be a different consideration. But at this point, combining two emergency levies of ’24 and ’27 would be 6.4 mils. We then talked about past election results, just as sort of a, you know, give you a little bit of context. And if you look back to 2011, of May, which was actually the last time we passed an ask for new money, in 2011, we did actually win a May ballot, and it was very close, 61 to 40, 51 to 49. Actually, I think the margin was approximately 500 votes at the most. I think it was actually 300. So on the right-hand side, you see the number of voters that have turned out. Obviously, spring is traditionally lower. If you look at spring of ’17, you were only at 14,000 voters. If you look at spring of ’18, we’re at 22,000. So the 28,000 in May of ’11 was significant. That’s clearly something we would have to work toward if we decide to go forward is increasing that turnout. Certainly, May of ’21, which was a real low point for, I think, our team together, when we lost 63 to 37, very small turnout of 15,000. So just as we did for the other night with the group of, you know, Build Our Future folks that had came back from participating last year, you know, the same questions really exist for you. There’s a number of different options that we have. We could look at a bond issue and a substitute levy, and we would call that sort of the double play. The dream shall never die, that’s, you know, hey, let’s put that on the bond issue of 3.98 mils. We’ve said that we need new facilities. This gets the ball rolling. Clearly, you know, the plan is known to the community, and we’ll talk later about the, some of the feedback we received, but there is a feeling, at least from those who have participated, that there is some momentum. We did close the gap. We had been at 54 to 46 in the fall of ’20, fell back to 63, 37 in the spring of ’21, moved forward to 52 to 48 in the fall of ’22. Gone till November is an option as well. We could, we could pass on the May 2023 ballot. A very conservative, very careful way to approach would be looking only at the substitute levy of a 6.4 mil, only that on November. And then there’s moving on, and we could say, you know what? Let’s turn our attention specifically to the substitute and the emergency levy. So any of those different combinations can work. We weighed that with our community, and again, we know that this is not, you know, this isn’t a scientific survey, but these are the folks that have some vested interest. They helped us craft the 4-2-1 plan, and they were back to give us some feedback. Clearly, the consensus there was, you know, on the dream option, meaning, let’s go for that bond issue, and let’s get that behind us, let’s get that done. And that was, you know, far and away. I mean, 16 people that attended voted for that, three that voted for double play still were even saying, let’s put the bond on. And then in terms of pros and cons, and, you know, I think we can all read through these together, really, but, you know, essentially, these are from, you know, folks that we know, right? Folks in our neighborhood, folks that we go to PTA meetings with, folks that we see at athletic events, you know, this is what they’re saying. And I think it probably, you know, behooves us to look at some of their thoughts, because while it’s not a scientific survey, I do think that, you know, each one of those folks has their own profile that is largely replicated in different factions of the community. So double play in terms of a bond issue and going forward, you see the pros, two birds with one stone, a couple of people said that, use the momentum, we talked about that. Say that would be okay if just a substitute passed, meaning, you know, there was some feeling in the room that if you put two on, one is a bond issue and one is a substitute, and they’re separate votes, and that is an important consideration. You cannot combine the substitute levy and the bond issue into one vote. Well, folks are going to go, yes, I’ll go yes on a substitute and no on a bond issue, because that’s the increase. Another pro, we will quickly know where things stand, we can move forward. I like this one, not the worst idea. That’s a ringing endorsement of that process. Terms of cons, only one of two will pass, as we talked about before, likely the substitute. Lots of campaign work in a short time, that meaning that it’s going to be difficult to explain to people substitute. It’s a new term, it hasn’t been used widely in Ohio. It really has originated in the last five to seven years. People have started to use that more commonly. It’s not often used in areas that are, for the most part, built out. For the most part, you see substitute levies in places where they expect a lot of growth, and that’s not necessarily in a ring suburb. Again, both may fail because of confusion or anger, and that was, you know, a clear sentiment of folks in the room. And then we’ll never pass either because of bond fail reasons, same type of thing. So in terms of pros for the dream, moving forward, not as many voters will come out in the spring, so if we can really catapult, you know, those folks that we are, know to be positive school people, and make sure we get them out, potentially there’s lower turnout on the other side of the ledger. Build off of the closer-than-expected results, again, you see 16 folks reinforcing that notion, so that was definitely a strong feeling in the room. State plan being locked in, this would be one of the largest boosts to the economy. It’s the right plan, it’s a great plan. No voters already know there’s going to be an operating levy, so when, you know, the notion of starting to talk about the fact that we’re going to be operating down the road, what folks are telling us through this thought is that, you know, that’s not a surprise. People understand that, you know, it’s been since 2011 since we’ve had new money. Less competition with other ballot issues. I think we were on with the Port Authority, and potentially one other in the fall, I can’t remember. I know the Port Authority was one, though. Some cons to that, the work of changing a couple thousand minds. Again, we were 1,800, so, you know, you’ve got to change 900 of that to get over that 50% plus one. Seems almost easier to let it go and adjust to two high schools, was the thought. PSH would still be standing with students inside, which is true. There is some sentiment to say, you know, people actually will not believe that Parma Senior High is closing until it actually does, and that no one’s going to school here. Residents already thought, November was too much money, and this will be more. Again, it’s very little more. So I think what I’ll do is just kind of skip to the ones that had pluralities or more than one thought. Gone till November, PSH will be demolished, there’s no confusion, so let’s wait till November, voters get a break from the other issues. Those were pros for waiting and just sitting, you know, sitting it out in May. The cons, feels like we’re giving up. State money and projections could change, likely will change, actually, knowing how the state works. The pros of a careful approach, meaning just a substitute, secures the future of the district. I mean, you would get, you know, two levies combined into one, and that would be taken care of. We wouldn’t have to worry about those renewals in ’24 or ’27. In terms of cons to going forward with a careful, last chance in ’23 without working on a new plan, which is true, you know, we cannot, we could submit the same plan to the state, but then, you know, we would see what they would give back to us in terms of the matching funds and the actual price. Tells people the bond issue wasn’t that important, which I thought was an interesting piece. I mean, we have been very clear about our need, and so this sentiment is saying, continue to be very clear about that need. Still need facilities, very similar to last, and further confuses voters. Finally, just some pros on move on, meaning just, let’s be done with the bond issues, let’s focus only on the substitute, secures future operating money, as we’ve mentioned. Cons to moving on and never, you know, going ahead with a bond issue at this point, eliminates it, forces a redo of the building plans, would rather give people time to adjust to two high schools. Two asks at once is frightening. If you went for the emergency and the substitute, it seems like that’s difficult. And again, and we’ve seen this in other options, seems like we’re giving up on something that is really needed. So all of those things are to, you know, put this in front of you tonight, and my hope is it’s a relatively short conversation. I believe that there is likely close to some consensus, but I would love to hear the Board’s discussion on, you know, of those options. Again, laser-focused on May, because those are the decisions we have to make in the next couple of weeks. Of those options, which do you feel that we should proceed with?
Thank you, Dr. Smalek. Thank you, Dr. Smalek. So this, I’m trying to digest all this again. I know I heard it on Monday, so I’m still thinking about it. So if we were to push this off until November or even the next May, we would lose one to 37% from the state, right, kickback.
We would lose that guarantee. We will get something from the state, but we don’t know what it is.
We don’t know what it is. So, and then we’d also lose our place in line for that money? Is that true?
No, the place in line isn’t determined by whether you’re going or not. It’s based on your need, you know, very complex formula. But I do want to underscore again that the November is simply not an option because of the fact that the plan expires in mid-September, the one-year sort of lock-in of the plan. And in mid-September, you know, we’ve already submitted paperwork to get on a ballot. We have to know what the millage needs to be, we have to know what the cost needs to be, the matching funds, all those things.
I do like the fact that, you know, reading some of these people, that we did have some momentum going into a positive thing, close that gap. And to know, knowing that, and knowing that we actually are serious about this, you know, we want this bond issue to pass, then I think maybe we have to go ahead and do it in May. So that’s, at least, is my thought. I was like, you know, if we’re going to vote on it, which we don’t do now, but if, you know, and my thought process is that we do this in May, because it shows that we’re serious about what we are doing. It’s just not a fly-by-the-night thing. It’s like, oh, let’s just throw it up there and see if it works. And this is a plan that goes along with our consolidation process and making this, you know, building our system back to where, you know, it’s the pride of Cuyahoga County. And I think that’s important. So that’s where I stand. Thanks for answering that question.
Thank you, sir.
Anybody else? Cindy?
Sure.
Pull your microphone.
Knowing how much work went into developing the plan, starting more than a year ago, really, to move us to one new high school, a state-of-the-art facility that would meet not only current educational needs, but also eliminate all of the problem issues that we currently have with very old aged buildings. I can’t imagine starting that process all over again in a year, because that’s as soon as that could happen. It’s a lot of work that’s already been done. We have a lot of momentum, I think, because I think, at least my experience has been, and in listening to many others who have also talked with many folks in the community, when people have an opportunity to hear the bond issue story and understand well the conditions of buildings and how buildings built in the 50s and 60s aren’t of the same code of today and are needing so many repairs, and that the state of Ohio has come in and evaluated our buildings, and every single one of them meets the threshold of needing to be replaced as opposed to repaired. And that’s not just our opinion, it’s an independent evaluation by the state of Ohio. All of those sorts of things included with the amount of work that we’ve done, you know, people really start to get the story. They understand things that they didn’t think maybe were such a big deal before. They really, when they, once they, once they hear the story, they can really understand it. And I think we need to just get out to more people so that they have the information, and hopefully, we’ll be able to support it and see the need for it. We’ve got a lot of momentum, because there was a lot of work done last year, and we just didn’t quite get over the threshold. So I, my personal feeling would be, I think we need to try again. I think we need to, because even if we pass, it’s still years before we have a new building, and we’ll be that much further behind if we aren’t going to pass sometime soon. So I’m in favor of trying again and hoping that we can get enough people to really understand the need that we have. And I’ve said it 100 times, and I’ll say it countless times more, when you drive out a Parma City School District in any direction, you find new buildings in every school district, and those weren’t paid for by a money tree in Columbus, they were paid for by state taxpayers’ dollars, including all of the people that live here and own property in Parma, Parma Heights, and Seven Hills. So I’m eager to see some of that money come back to us in the form of nearly $72 million credit towards our building situation here in the district, and also to have our three communities be competitive with the kinds of building facilities that many other communities have. So I’m a go for keeping the momentum up, and hopefully, the community will agree.
Thanks.
Thank you. So if we didn’t go in May, you said that, you know, this plan is for a year. If we didn’t change the plan, could we just not resub, could we, you know, submit the same exact plan earlier and say, just tell us what it’s going to cost?
They won’t do that, actually. The state will not, because everything’s based on an enrollment report, which is a really extensive process they go through, and they won’t do that for a school district until your plan is expired. So enrollment leads to square footage, leads to dollars to construct. So we would be projecting how much it would cost, and we wouldn’t know what the state share would be.
I just worry that May being so close, you don’t have enough time to properly campaign to, I mean, we saw how long, how long we took to get, people to go knock on doors and drop literature and talk to people and go around. I worry that there’s not enough time between now and May to reach the people that we still need to reach. And then I worry about the other money asks that are needed in the near future, that just keep coming, one after another after another, that eventually they’ll say, you know, if they say yes to one, that they might say no to two. And, I don’t know, it bothers me as to what is the most important thing at this moment? Is shoring up our finances or this? Can we, can we hold off long enough on the shoring up of our finances to go for this again right now? You know, it’s, I’m kind of still in the air as to whether or not May is the right time, just knowing that there’s so many other things that are going to be needed in the years to come, and I’d rather not wait till the last minute to make those decisions. So I’m still wrestling with it.
Well, it’s not an easy thing.
Right.
It’s not easy.
If I can share a couple of thoughts, and we didn’t talk about this a lot in the first effort in this, which would have been obviously for the November ballot, but allow, building one new high school also dramatically consolidates our district in other ways, which then leads to further savings. And I know it’s early and it’s, you know, clearly projections, but our projections have been very accurate. In fact, even reviewed by, you know, Mr. Nucio’s five-year forecast guru, our projections have been really spot-on in terms of savings. And we would project, if we were able to build a new high school, what that would do is allow us to move our two middle schools. We would go to two-middle-school model then. And so that would be Normandy and Valley Forge, and so then our current three middle schools plus Pleasant Valley could become elementary schools. And that’s a $5.2 million savings in today’s salaries. Now, the issue is, and again, being transparent and honest, I’m not trying to spin this, that wouldn’t happen, you know, in best case, until fall of ’26. So in terms of, you know, that ’27 deficit, fall of ’26 is already into fiscal year ’27. So, you know, you still need that need for ’27, but in terms of, you know, on the, in the future, I mean, that’s a pretty significant savings. So I wanted to point out that, that piece in how this bond issue itself really leads to dramatic savings from an operating standpoint as well, because then the 4-2-1 model can become reality. So that was one piece I want to share. And the only other piece I want to share is, you know, I agree about the campaign piece. The reality is, most of that campaign occurred from Labor Day on, which is, you know, about two months plus a couple of weeks. And so we’re, right now, we’re about three and a half months away. It is a challenge. I mean, you know, you and I have had this conversation many times, I mean, trying to, this district is so large that it’s difficult to reach all the folks you have to reach. And you’re right. And so it is a tight timeline, but at the same time, not a, not one that is all that different from what we faced in November.
Right. And then my other, you actually, you kind of touched on my other concern, is that if it does pass, yes, we will get savings, but the savings won’t come by the time it opens. So we’ll be opening and not having enough money to open it. Like, because you said we’ll be in a $37 million deficit in ’27, it’ll open in that school year, so we’ll be opening without enough money to open it. And it, that scares me. Because that has happened to other, basically, other districts where they’re getting ready to open a new school, and they don’t have any operating money.
Yeah, I mean, to simplify, what you’re saying is, we would need, you know, by ’27, which really means by ’25, we need more operating money. I mean, that, that’s a fact, yes.
Jack?
I just want to, I just want to say, I’m 100% in favor of putting it on the May ballot. It’s a smaller number we’re working with, it’s easier to get our supporters out and move them. I think the consolidation savings has to be broadcast and known, because that’s the big sell, is the consolidation. And I’m a graduate of Parma Senior High. I’ve been consistent on one high school since I’ve been up here. I think that it would be nice to return to the queen of schools. I, I think that it would be nice to return to the queen of schools and have the largest school in Ohio again, and have something to be very proud of. I'm, I'm, not that I'm not proud of what I have here now, but certainly would make Parma a state-of-the-art facility and, and something to be proud of and looked at. And, and, and I think that's what we have to sell, is, is pride in, in the community as well as, as the cost and, and the other things that go along with it. The negatives are tough. I get it. I get it. I grew up in this city. I know what it's like. The fact that we are counting on, on getting new money if we don't get this, we don't know that. We, that might not happen anyway. At least if we have a consolidation plan, if we get, if we get partially there, we've got a light in the tunnel that we could see, we could see savings in, in the long term and, and have a new facility to be proud of. That, that's, that's my take on the whole thing.
Yeah, thank you, Jack.
You're welcome.
So, well, there's a resolution on the, on the-
On tonight's agenda.
On tonight's agenda. I want to be clear, from our research, it does require four, four yes votes. And so, you know, if we aren't able to get that, we would not really be able to move forward under the current structure, anyway, under the current situations that we're working through. So that is, you know, an important consideration that I just want to clarify.
Yeah, I just don't like the, the optics of us, you know, tossing a towel in, because, you know, you know, I, everybody knows I was a wrestling guy. And if I toss a towel in every time I got taken down, then I wouldn't have been a champ at anything. Coaching, myself personally, or whatever. I mean, that's just my attitude. So I don't give up easy. I don't give up easily. So I'm all about it. Just getting it done, let's, let's go. Just get after it.
I, I didn't say I wanted to toss the towel in. I just worry about the other thing, you know? I love the plan. I think it's the best thing for the, for the district. I wish it would have happened in November. It's just, now I'm starting to, starting to think about all the other things that Sean's been talking about that we need, and it's-
No, you're 100% right. I mean, there's, those worries are in my head as well. You know, but I, I just can't see us, like, just give up on the dream, so to speak. It's, it's something we need to do, so.
I need to make a couple-
You got any more?
Another remark. I, I respect deeply your opinion on this, Mr. Ruda. I share your concerns about the operating funds, to be sure, and have struggled with this kind of mightily, as I knew that we were approaching this, this month. And I, you know, I'm, I, let me ask you, Dr. Smilak, as I understand this, this takes two votes.
It doesn't.
Two consecutive votes. So if we approve consideration of this tonight, then our next vote, if we change our mind, we could still vote no at that time? Is that-
You could. And, and actually, we, we will have to, if, if it's a yes vote tonight, then we have to figure out sometime between now and the 24th, which is a new deadline to us. The county has adjusted seemingly on the fly their requirements. So it's no longer February 1st. We would have to adjust our timeline, because our next scheduled board meeting is the 26th. So we would have to find a time we could meet, and probably, you know, have a one-agenda item meeting. But yes, that's correct, to answer your question. We could still vote no a second time.
Okay.
Okay. Because it requires-
I'm sorry.
Two times voting yes on this.
Correct.
I do want the board to know, we have, for the renewal levy that expires in '24, we have four chances. Two this year, May and November, and two next year, May and November, before it expires and we lose that money. Just keep that in mind when you're-
That's an emergency levy.
That's the emergency levy.
So it would be a renewal.
It would be a renewal.
And no tax increase.
Correct.
Okay. Very good. Anybody else? Anything else you want to add?
Tax increase.
You want to add? You're all good? You're all good? Okay. All right. So I move to adopt resolution 2023-01-09 to adjourn this meeting.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2023-01-09. Roll call, Mr. Nucio.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mr. Christ.
Yes.
Meeting's adjourned. Thank you.